Good evening, I'll call this meeting to the Cartersville City Council to order if you please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray, asking for the gift of wisdom. Well guard the fountain of wisdom whose will is good and gracious, whose law is truth. Guide and bless us, all who are leaders and all who serve others. Lead us to wise decisions for the well-being of all persons and for a just and peaceful community. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God and no other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge, how about the roll? We won't make you read out the pledge by yourself.
Carrie Hodg, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steph, Ward 2. Lilith Conspire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Tiffany, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from March the 17th. Council, you've had these well in advance, have tonight had a chance to look them over. It's your time now to make any edits or approve them as they lie.
Mayor, I looked them over and didn't see any additions or deletions, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have, well Randy, why don't you get us started with the amendment to our public safety ordinance regarding indoor firing ranges.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a second reading. Our general ordinance for the city does not allow for the discharge of firearms within the city's boundaries. With that, this particular change would allow for that in the confines of an approved firing range. There are three different ordinances on the agenda tonight relating to the same thing, the same subject matter. This is the first one, and again, it is a second reading and with that...
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy or any discussion on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the amendment to the public safety for indoor firing range.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Randy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. With that, the city has proposed some standards for the establishment and operation of indoor firing range. It'll be done and handled through our business license processing. With that, with y'all choosing to allow that within the realm of an indoor firing range, the second step would be to have the standards in place.
Okay. Same, no changes since the first...
There have been no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Is there any discussion about anything that's contained inside that amendment to the business license regarding indoor firing ranges? Remember, this includes distances and whatnot, and what currently sits at 200 feet?
That is correct.
And was there some discussion last time? And I think...
Noise standards and operational standards and so forth.
Is there any discussion or questions about any of the items on that? If there are none, a motion is in order.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Randy.
And the last portion of that is an amendment to our zoning ordinance. This actually, this particular amendment went through our planning commission in accordance with the zoning procedure standards. With that, with the allowance of indoor firing range, we needed to place them in certain zoning districts. The planning commission has, like I said, heard this request and made a recommendation for the approval of the placement of indoor firing ranges in the general commercial and light industrial zoning districts.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing relative to file T-16-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak either for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-16-01. Council, there's time for further discussion or clarification, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. SU-16-02, as the Menino Show continues.
This is also a second reading of a case that went before the planning commission. This is a special use application for Douglas Street United Methodist Church. They're looking to bring in a modular classroom, which is considered an expansion of the site, which did necessitate the special use permit. With that, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, and they did actually recommend approval with a condition on it. They did recommend that there be a seven-year time period on this particular application, at such time that they can take a review of the, further review of the structure that was moved in, and the applicant could file for a time extension after the review of the existing structure, because it is a used structure that they are moving in.
We're not mandating that it goes after seven years, remaining that it's just reviewed and they could, if it's in fine shape and still going on, they could renew it for three years or some period of time that everybody's come to work.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menino on this?
A question, Mayor. Randy, in the work session, we discussed the city department reviews, and we discussed some comments by electric and fire. Have those been addressed?
Yes, there was an existing outdoor structure there that the fire department noted that it wouldn't meet code if it was placed at a certain distance from that structure. That structure has since been removed. Additionally, the electric department noted that they had a light structure, a light pole out there, that would have to be relocated, and the church is aware of that and would be relocating that for the addition of this modular classroom.
Okay. Any other questions for Randy at this point? All right, I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU-16-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for 16-02. And again, Council, your opportunity to have further discussion, or if there's none to be added, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to offer the motion, not too soon to approve the conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Randy, continue on, ZMA-16-01.
This particular case also went before the planning commission. This is a zoning map amendment. Annually, we re-adopt the city's official zoning map to include the previous year's zoning cases and annexations. Additionally, with that, the city and county had discussed the Clarence Brown Center, and they're looking to do some additional expansion out there, or may consider doing some additional expansion. So there was also a general commercial change to that property, it was previously shown as public institutional on the previous zoning map. So, again, this is annual adoption of the map, included all the previous year's cases, and with that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? All right, I'll open up a public hearing for ZMA-16-01. Once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for ZMA-16-01, and leave it with Council to do what you wish.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you as well. All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you to all involved with that. Ms. Reed, got kind of uncomfortable, didn't it, for a second?
Gosh, okay, I'm a little early.
Missed time to approach.
I'm just so eager here.
I like that.
All right, guys, I have for you a hopeful approval of two proposed festival zones. The first would be for an art market event coming up on May 21st. This is a new event to encourage some of the, kind of focus on the arts that we identified in our yearly planning session. We are going to be working with the Booth Artist Guild and the Booth Photographers Guild to put on this art market. We have local musicians playing, as well as the Etowah Jazz Society, and a downtown business, Main Street Coastal Cuisine, who's going to be providing the adult beverages that need said festival zone. These, and again, the proposed festival zone would be for Friendship Plaza, only for that event. The second proposed festival zone would be for the annual Bluegrass Festival. This is pretty much the same format that you guys have seen previously. We are going to have two stages, one at the pavilion in Friendship Plaza, the other in front of the old firehouse. And the proposed festival zone for this event, which is our largest of the year, would go from the train tracks, Church Street, to Main Street. We would close Cherokee Avenue, and then it would run again from the train tracks up to Irwin Street, and that would be where the fencing and the alcohol sales and everything would be taking place inside of that.
Very good. Questions from Ms. Reed on this?
Downtown businesses are informed and on board with this?
Absolutely. So with the art market, of course, folks are excited to have more events downtown. That's something that they are always asking about, and the people that will be impacted by that are made aware. My board has talked to them, and of course, we'll have further contact as it goes along. And with Bluegrass Festival, of course, this is our fourth year having the event, so they're at least familiar in that regard. And as we approach the date, which is October 29th, we'll make sure to have contact with everyone to let them know that, you know, this is coming back, and they can expect much the same experience as last time. Positive, I hope.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions about these festival zones? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, you have the next couple items, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This first item is an agreement between the city and Georgia DOT. Georgia DOT sent us this project framework agreement on Douthat Ferry. All the terms and conditions are the same as the project framework agreement that we signed in 2008, and the only difference is they added $609,000 for preliminary engineering activities, which would include environmental and engineering and surveying.
Archaeological.
Yes, yes. And that is for, any money we spend in that category going forward, we would be able to get reimbursed out of that $609,000 pool, is what the GDOT project manager has assured me.
But now that we've already spent...
No, we can't recoup any money we've already spent, but they are making some monies available to us.
That's good. Questions, comments, or motions?
Good, good. Go ahead.
If that looks good, you've made a motion, right, to approve? Anybody else?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimously done. Continue on, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. This next item is an agreement between the city and Eckler Golf Management. They're the owner of Woodland Hills Golf Club, which is on Summit Ridge Drive, and there's a picture of it there. They have, the road in front of the golf club is a private road, and it's in pretty bad shape. The pavement is in bad shape, and they want the city to take, they want deed that property over to the city. And so this agreement stipulates that they will put, we did an estimate on how much it would cost to repair the deteriorated pavement, and the total was about, well, their part's $45,000, and then our part would be $9,000, and the county's part would be $9,000. So this agreement, they've agreed to put money in escrow to bring the road up to a decent state of repair. There's some other things in the agreement about easements as far as golf cart crossings and private utilities. They have some irrigation lines that go, because there's a golf course on both sides of the road. But the benefit to the city to accept this road would be that it would provide a public second entrance to Carter Grove subdivision. Currently, the front entrance is the only road that's actually public, and if you remember several years ago, when the golf course was closed, they gated off this road, so there was only one entrance to the subdivision. So this would ensure that the road always stays open.
I'm sorry to ask this in the work session, but is this the entirety of the road that would be closed, that would be labeled as privately closed? There's not many other sections of this road that are privately owned anymore, is that correct?
That is a very good question.
Thank you. And that is very good of you to make note of that.
Because I should have mentioned that...
Because I've asked a lot of dumb ones, and you haven't said anything about that.
I should have mentioned that this section of Belmont is actually still private. It is owned by the developer that bought Carter Grove. Now, you know, it's not final plated yet. Now, you know, as that subdivision develops out, you know, when we accept the final plat for that subdivision, then it will become public. So the section we're here talking about today is from here to Summit Ridge Circle, which is right there. So all this is what we're talking about today.
But all the golf courses, private road, that won't exist anymore. That'll be brought up to standard and accepted into the city.
It'll be public to here. Now, it could be the case, you know, if, for some reason, I can't imagine why, that developer, if they got mad, or, you know, they could still gate off this section, but I don't see where they would have a reason to do that.
At the time, we would take it that would be at our standard, right? I mean, we're not going to accept a subdivision.
That's right. We won't sign the final plat until it's brought up to our standard. That's correct.
You know, this one's a bit unusual, because it's got the county involved in it. There was a time, I think, that the city owned the golf course, in fact.
In the 70s, that's correct.
Yeah, we're all kind of all over it. It's got the good middle-of-the-road approach to get it.
Well, I appreciate the work that the two of you in particular have put into it, and our legal folks as well, to, working with them to make that happen, because I do agree with you, I think, to have that, the potential of having that pretty well-used road to cut from the city back through 113 to 61 towards Dallas. If that were to go away, that wouldn't really serve anybody all that well. Thank you for that. Any other questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
None related, thank you. The street striping, it looks really great. Thanks for doing it.
Thanks.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Riggs, you're up with the next two.
Yes, Mayor, this first one is a consent agreement with the Public Service Commission. It's with regard to an incident where one of our employees got burned last year, and this replaces their proposed civil penalty, so I recommend approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please.
This is for a new pair of steel pipe squeezers, and it's to replace our old set. We've had those repaired, the cylinder several times, and it just keeps going out. So we recommend the low bidder, and it's $5,680.35, and it's from Georgia Underground.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council. This first bid award is for door and frame replacement for the Cartersville Civic Center. We have three exterior doors, the kitchen door, goal room door, and aquian door that are in, well, rustling out and need replacing. We had budgeted $3,000 a door. We had a single bid come in from Earl Hightower Construction at $7,200, and it is a budget item, and I recommend the low bid from Earl Hightower Construction.
Okay.
Greg, was that under budget?
It was under budget.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Sir Mayor, this next project is a covered pavilion for our Dellinger Park Pool. If you remember, this is hard to believe, but going on our fourth year for our new pool that was renovated. When that was renovated, one of the things that was left off was our shade area that allowed people a place to escape from inclement weather as well as the sun. So we had, this is a recreational bond project, we had budgeted $70,000 for this. We sent bids out to five local contractors, had two returned, and I'm recommending the low bid from WBH Contracting in the amount of $43,700. This structure will be likened to our new bath house and new office area at the pool that was done four years ago, and it is a budgeted project for our recreational bond funds.
All right. Any other discussion, if not, a motion?
Mayor, just want to make sure, you're saying that the buildings that we will be building, this will be in the same kind of roof line and...
No, this is going to be the same that is a building as at the pool now, the, our new bath house that was designed there. It'll be, it'll have the same roof line, it'll have, it'll have block columns like the bath house does, split face block. It'll mirror that, our bath house.
So that could be a little bit different look on top of the hill versus...
It will be. It will be.
Can I ask a question? I should have asked you in the work session.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we not using the same contractor for this as we are? We haven't bid out the other one yet, have you?
That's correct. And, you know, when we had done the engineering, or chose the engineer, you know, we had decided that we were going to do the 10 buildings, which is now nine buildings, the five at Dellinger and the four outside Dellinger, and the other items were going to be done by recreation staff, because I have the experience of doing those, and so this was designed by the staff to look like our existing bath house, and that was just to try to stretch our dollars more.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion.
I'll accept the low bid.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Greg.
And my final item tonight is the fencing bid for the Dellinger Park Athletic Fields. We, this was legally advertised, we received five qualifying bids. Those, this is for the fields, softball and baseball fields 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. It's also for the fencing around the football field. It's also for the fencing around the outdoor basketball courts. We, I told you earlier in the work session that it was $380,000, and that was an inaccurate number. We had budgeted $430,000, but it's also included some lighting and scoreboards. So this is under, this is under budget, and I'm recommending the low bid at $270,412.71 from Cartersville Fence.
So a combination of the lighting and the fence, because you said we budgeted those together?
Yes.
And I know we've already done, we already kind of know what the lighting is, right?
Well, now, that was a different lighting.
Okay.
We, that was...
I don't want money that was yours.
That was his lighting.
Sir?
It was his lighting.
Yeah, well, that was for, that was for the softball. This is, this lighting was for the change of the basketball court lights.
Right, okay. I got you.
The fencing is coated.
The fencing is coated. It's just like the tennis court fencing. In this bid, I had asked for four separate prices. I'd asked for a, not knowing what the price would be. We asked for a regular galvanized fence, which is what we have now on these fields, or what we had before we took them down. And then we asked it for the fused and bonded coated that we put in tennis courts six years ago now. And then we also asked for a price for our backstop with a knee wall and without a knee wall. And a knee wall, if y'all are familiar, if y'all have gone to the Cartersville High School baseball game, they have a knee wall around that backstop. Just something that adds to the aesthetics of the field. And this, and these numbers came in under our budget, and that's my recommendation for those items.
I know we talked about in staff meeting, you went to great length in terms of contacting local vendors, even calling some...
I did.
That were not responsive.
When, when these were publicly advertised, I sent, I sent, and I emailed two of these bids to our local vendors, that's Cartersville Fence and Barto Fence. Cartersville Fence showed up to our pre-bid meeting, Barto Fence did not. So when they didn't show up, I called them, and they did call back, but they did not return a bid in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other discussion, a motion would be in order.
Motion to accept the low bid presented.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The electric department requests authorization to purchase two pad mount transformers to replenish stock for two units that we've had to use recently. One 150 KVA unit we had to use up at the water department's pump station behind Kohl's. That one, the low, we got three bids on, and that one came in at $5,938, which was the lowest bid. And for the second one, we had to use for shot and Kirk Honda. We got three bids on that one, and we recommended low bid, also from Urby on that one, for $7,276.
All right, thank you, and Derek has put both of those separate items into one presentation, which is totally fine and cool. So if you want to make a motion to approve one, both, or neither, it's up to the Council.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the 150 transformer purchase as well as the 300 transformer purchase.
I'll second that.
Very good. All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, everyone. First up, we have our circa 1965 Heister forklift at the Water Pollution Control Plant. There is a picture of grandpa.
That looks okay, though, don't you think?
A little paint, it'd probably be...
Some new tires on it, it'll be good.
Yeah. It's the lack of brakes that I'm most concerned about. Well, we've had this thing forever. This actually came to us new with the water plant. That's where it originally was delivered, when the water plant was put into service. So we feel like we've gotten the good out of it. It's cabin mechanic problems, hard to get parts for it because of its age. We have some things on it now that we feel like are legitimate safety issues, thus we'd like to, we'd like to replace it. We took bids for a 3,000-pound forklift with side shift, got three bids back. The low bid was Bailey Company at $18,900. This would be as exactly like what we'd be getting as I could find a picture of on the internet. I think that'd be a pretty close proximity of it. We do have a Mitsubishi forklift at the water plant now. It's been a very good unit, no service issues. Have no reason to believe this one won't be just like it, and would recommend that for your approval.
You want to get the cool mint green?
Absolutely.
Great.
We can have any color we want, as long as it's that color.
Blue.
Everything's blue.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Bob.
Next up, everyone I believe is familiar with the Highway 41411 utility relocation project that we've had ongoing for quite some time now. We have a section of existing water main there that is, I won't say in conflict. What's going to happen is there's going to be approximately 35 feet of dirt put on top of this in preparation for a temporary bridge to allow the rebuilding of the bridges that are currently there. This is going over the railroad in that area. That line will not withstand that kind of overburden without some protection, thus we need to essentially pour a concrete slab over the section of pipe that will have that fill put in over it. The slab, as designed, will be approximately 325 feet long, 27 inches thick. It's pretty substantial. And we, yeah, we have a, we have a price for unity construction. They are the contractor of record for that project. There's an open contract, we're going to treat this as a change order. Their price for constructing the slab, if everything were to go perfect, there were no field changes, no unsuitable materials, none of those things that can get you, they gave us a price of $329,473.19. Because of the likelihood of getting into unsuitable materials, there could be existing damage to the pipe from the fill that's been put over it already. We do know from talking to the contractor, they ran a vibratory compactor over the pipe at a depth that doesn't make us comfortable. So what I'd like to ask for is that you would add $400,000 to the existing contract. That will give us some wiggle room to make field changes without having a delay of coming back here to get approvals for these piecemeal changes that we have to make.[1743.12] coming back here to get approvals for these piecemeal changes that we have to make.
And just to wait to be clear, because I'm hearing it differently, you are asking for an amount not to exceed $400,000.
For the change, right, the change order not to exceed $400,000.
So it's got the gap between $329 and $400.
Right. We're basically asking for $70,000, give or take, to play with for those unknowns.
Right.
The contract as it sits, let me find my number, is a $1.153 million contract that was original, so what we'd be doing is taking that to $1.553 with this change order.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve change order.
Okay.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $400,000.
Is that the way you knew?
The amount of the change order should not exceed $400,000, yes.
Second.
Were you good with the way that was?
That's fine.
Does that meet your standard? All right, so I got a motion, and I got a second.
Kevin, get it.
As long as she writes it down that way.
Okay.
She got it, she got it. Not exceed $40,000.
Thank you. All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Come on.
Honorable Mayor and counsel, since the joint Carisville-Barto Training Center was constructed in 2008 and '09, it's been known the facility has had excessive pressure on the hydrant system. Excuse me. The pressure is so great that it's actually damaged three hydrants, and recently, we had one hydrant that actually blew pieces out of the ground. So in addition to the equipment and damage, it's a huge safety concern for our personnel as they open and close the hydrant system at the training facility. Over the years, it was believed that the greater demand in the air would reduce the pressure, but the current trends show that this has not occurred and will not occur. The current system is operating at 175 PSI, so we are requesting a joint project with Barto County to place an inline reducer that will reduce the pressure to below 100 PSI. Barto Water has agreed to do the project at no labor costs. The total cost for all parts and equipment needed to complete the project is $10,400. This will be shared jointly by both departments. We are respectfully requesting the approval of $5,200, and Barto County will provide the labor to cover the work that needs to be done at that area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McClung on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any other business that needs to come before counsel this evening? Come on, Gregory.
Actually, this is something that I didn't say during my last bid for the fencing, that I would like to surplus what old fence that is not being used. Public Works got a lot of it, the gas department's got a lot of it, but we have a lot of fence that's, that could be left, and if those departments don't need the rest of that fencing, I would like to surplus it and sell it on go deals.
Did you just add that item to the agenda? It was in our, it was in our book as a note, it just wasn't put in, but we could add that item in.
What, what quantity, I mean, do you have a quantity on?
Well.
Just say a surplus fence.
Surplus. Well.
That was, that he's bidding. You can identify.
I mean, it was.
You can identify.
Yes, I mean, it was, it's the fence that we've taken down.
Is it the kind of thing that you would want to put it on?
It'd be on go deals, what we sold. Is that what your question is?
You can just amend that bid award that he had to include.
Yeah, I just forgot to.
Can we just add it to the agenda?
That's what it says.
Let me just go ahead and add it. Motion to add an item to the agenda?
Send it.
Got a motion, second in favor?
Aye.
Good. We had the item. You want to surplus some fence, don't you?
Yes, sir, I apologize for not doing it.
Chair, we're going to adjourn the motion.
Don't move. Second, I mean, motion to approve.
You go ahead, motion adds seconded. Karen, go ahead.
I'll do whatever she said.
Something, let's get this sold on, y'all get it.
Thank you.
All in favor, Nikate?
Whatever she said.
Anybody raise your right hand and say aye and approve this? Thank you. Unanimous. Anything else?
Mayor, just this. Our DDA director showed us a new ad that will be going up in a billboard close to a Dairyville that will be bringing people to our downtown area. It's very attractive, very nice. Just want people to see it.
There it goes. Anything else? Chair, we're going to adjourn the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Or adjourn. Didn't get.